Good afternoon, everyone. If we all settle down, we can start this show. And we're getting ready. It is five after one. And I will now call to order the May 3rd, 2018 regular meeting of the City of Rancho Mirage City Council, Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the redevelopment successful agency. We will now have a flag salute presentation by the Cathedral City High School Air Force Junior ROTC. Will you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you. Now, we have a wonderful start to this very important meeting. Again, we have joining us now our fourth graders from Rancho Mirage Elementary School who will sing the Rancho Mirage song. And here they are.
California, California, a land that is dear to my heart. From the waters of the beautiful coast, to the desert where you see the sun most. Central Valley, where the carpers go cross. Happy Ring is where the snow touches tree tops. California, California, our regions covered in art. California, California, a land that is dear to my heart. Every region has a natural resource. Every resource can have its waste of course. The wood and trees and the minerals found, and the products carpers grow from the ground. California, California, our regions covered in art. California, California, a land that is dear to my heart. A land that is dear to my heart.
Very good. Good, good, good.
Rancho Mirage, the home of the Rams, where students, teachers, and everyone. We work hard and we have fun by celebrating learning for everyone. Rancho Mirage, the best in the west, where teachers teach and give you their best. With reading, math, and writing, we are fit for the test. Teachers help and give us clues to make this the very best school. We learn new things every day. It's sometimes hard, but it sure is cool. Rancho Mirage, the best in the west, where teachers teach and give you their best. With reading, math, and writing, we are fit for the test. We are fit for the test.
Thank you. That was fabulous. And thank you, Mrs. Regal, for bringing the students to share in this special day. Take care. There they go. Very good. All right. May we now have the roll call, please, Chrissy?
Councilmember Hobart.
Here.
Councilmember Smotrich.
Here.
Councilmember Wile.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Kite.
Here.
And Mayor Townsend.
Here. Thank you, Chris. Next is a non-agenda public comments. Now, this is the opportunity for the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. I would like to point out that there is a second public comment, period, listed on the agenda following the action calendar, which is specifically for comments related to the installation of the officers and rotation of the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. So please reserve such comments for that time. As a reminder, please limit your comments to three minutes and begin by stating your name and city of residence. Very good. Now, our first speaker is Alan Worthy. Hello, Alan.
Good afternoon. I know it wasn't your first card. I couldn't have been, but I guess so. So, good afternoon, and I'll hold back those comments. So, thank you for having me. I hope all you guys saw the today's Desert Sun. If you haven't, please do read it. The cover is, or the lead story is, "Seevag Votes to Add Homeless Services." And Ms. Smotrich, I want to call you out because the last time, well, it's been a few weeks ago, prior to the election, of course, and you stopped, you know, in your time to speak later, and went down the list of everything that the City of Rancho Mirage lives up to, and all of your obligation setting that record straight. And I appreciate your doing that on this crucial topic. It's tragic. Like I've said before, and I'll say it again, every time I go to LA and I come back here, it's like a measuring cup. And it's just terrible, especially in Palm Springs. Everybody knows that, but we know it's everywhere. And the whole situation is dire in this valley. And when it starts looking like Santa Monica used to look and Santa Barbara used to look, it's not good. So, please read this article. And I called the writer and thanked her. So, thank you for, for your announcements before. What else? Let me see who's here. Those kids are gone.
Thirty seconds, Alan.
I know. I'm speaking very slowly. I was wondering when I was going to turn around and make sure those kids were gone. Okay. So, anyway, I did have a hearing last Wednesday with Eisenhower, and that did not go well. The judge, actually, if you can believe it, got it off on the wrong foot and, in fact, apologized for it. So, I'm not going to comment on it anyway, regardless of the time or the kids, because we will be back in court. Okay? But I want to thank you again for your support. I do want to call you out, and I'm absolutely irate. I'll live up to my reputation. What, you're retiring? What, are you kidding me?
You looking at me?
I'm looking at you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the Desert Sun does cover the news from time to time, and I see this story. I was like, what?
One of these days, I'll learn to call you Alan Worthy instead of James Worthy. I don't know why. I look at you, and I think of three-point shots.
All right. Well, you know what? That's what... I don't know. I don't either, especially these...
I'm a slow learner.
I can't even stand out now, but, yeah, that was a joke back in the days in casting department. That was at his heyday, was my 15 minutes of fame in Hollywood. So, I got the joke.
Yeah, but I just got you two more minutes at the podium. So, let's move on to the happy stuff.
Me?
Thank you, Alan.
Me?
I'm not telling you to sit down, but you're done, I think.
Oh, no, no. I'm just irate with you for retiring.
Oh.
I was going to live up to my reputation, which I'll take up again later at a more appropriate time, that I am irate and unruly I was called in court. Not in court, but that I got called out at the council meeting here of being unruly. I will say that much. I don't ever remember being unruly here, except for saying, resign, resign, if that's unruly. Anyway, so I'll see you in the next chapter.
Thank you.
But I'm going to be unruly and say I'm starting a petition and I'll start picketing. How's that sound?
Bad, bad.
Stay on the public sidewalk, please.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on items that are not on the agenda at this time? All right. Seeing none, we will move along. Next is the consent calendar. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Randy Binder, our city manager.
Three minutes?
Three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, members of the city council. It's a fine day in the City of Rancho Mirage. You have two items on your consent calendar today. Item number one, of course, is to waive the full reading of the ordinances that would be introduced or adopted pursuant to today's agenda. We'll leave it at that. And item number two is second reading of an ordinance, ordinance number 1135. And this is another step in the process to install the necessary public improvements for the Dell Webb Development Project. It's a community facilities district number four. And you looked at this at your last meeting. If this is approved today, it would go into effect in 30 days.
Good.
And staff is here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Randy. Are there any comments from the public on these items or from council? All right. Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. Very good. Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Chris. Next, I'll take a few moments to say a few words. It's remarkable how quickly a year can pass. It's hard to fathom that my term as mayor is now at an end, but what a year it was. I am in awe of what has occurred over the course of the last 12 months in Rancho Mirage. First of all, the residents of our fine city acknowledged their favor in the work of this council by re-electing Dana, Iris, and myself. I thank you, and it's a privilege and an honor. Before I talk a bit about the year that was, I want to acknowledge some very special people we could not do this work without: the strong, loving support of our partners and our spouses. And I want to thank you all. I have a small token of appreciation for each of you, so just wait there, and I'm coming There we go. Okay. I'm going to start over here with the future Mrs. Richard Kite. Hi, Becky. How are you? Congratulations. And we have something for you. Thank you. There you go. Thank you, sweetheart. The next, the lovely, the one and only, you're married to who? Who? An attorney? Dana Hobart? Vicki Hobart, the lovely Vicki Hobart. Here you go. Thank you, sweetheart, lovely sweetheart. Yes, the proud. Next, we have Mr. Tom Smotrich, chauffeur, right? First person coming to be pretty soon when she can become his mayor, right? Thank you, Tommy. There you go. There you go. And then we have my Robert. Thank you, baby. Appreciate it. There you go. There you are. Then, we have the history of Rancho Mirage sitting right here. We have the wonderful wife of the wonderful...
Rodney Vos.
Congratulations, sweetheart. And we have the wonderful wife of...
Alan Seaman.
Good. Who served this community, this council, for many, many years. Thank you, dear. Here you go. Here's for you and for you. Thank you. Am I missing somebody? Is that it? Okay. We could give it to you. If you want it, you can get it. How about on the 17th?
Sure.
You can do it on that.
Can you put those in water, please?
Put them in water till the 17th for Randy.
Just cut the bottom in.
Okay. Now, I will continue to my Robert. 16 years ago, I asked you out to lunch, and you said, no. No, thank you. No. But I persisted, and you said yes. That was the beginning of the second amazing relationship, which I have been blessed with. You and I have been together ever since. We have been there for each other through two election campaigns and life's ups and downs. You have been my guiding light, my sounding board, and always there to say, now, now, Charlie, let's think this through. You give me strength when you say, Charlie, just always be yourself. Robert, I love you. And for all the joy and comfort you bring to us and to those around you, thank you. Now, I can continue on with an extraordinary year we have had. We opened the Rancho Mirage Observatory, a first-of-a-kind public research-level facility, expanding the fabulous library campus into an even stronger center for lifelong education. The dog park underwent improvements to include additional seating, shade structures, and lighting, adding to the experience of dogs and their companions. The former electric car distributor property was purchased by a Ferrari franchise and will be progressing towards a temporary opening with plans for a brand-new showroom coming soon, another wonderful addition to our Highway 111. EPTA Properties, a Canadian real estate development firm, purchased Section 31 with work underway to a master plan, the entire 680-acre site. This will be one of the most significant and impressive developments in the valley. The city established the Rancho Mirage Emergency Authority, providing residents and businesses an opportunity to save 5% on the cost of cleaner electricity than what was provided by the Edison Company. The REAMA also affords consumers the options of purchasing 100% renewable energy. The river furthered its position as the premier dining and entertainment destination in the valley, with Agua California Bistro, California Winery, Escape Games, and Bedichees, the Neapolitan Pizza Company opening much fanfare. Century Theatres also completed installation of wonderful lounge-style seating. Across the street, Rancho Las Palmas Shopping Center continued to fill spaces by adding Dicky's BBQ, Orange Twist, Club Pilates, Tricia's Lashes. What a beautiful renovation that center has undergone. Gelson's Market completed its renovation and now offers a complete shopping experience with fabulous new dining options and customer amenities. Dell Webb began construction on its 1,100 new home community along Dyna Shore with nearly 50 homes sold to date. We held several events, including the first Rancho Mirage Wine and Food Festival, the first holiday show, the first cinema under the stars, adding to the continued success of the Rancho Mirage Writers Festival, Art Affair, Music in the Park, and sponsorships of the A&amp;A Inspiration Golf Classic. Last, but certainly not least, the former Charles Townsend Building was purchased by Ethan Allen as a site of its new showroom. What a great addition to the city this will be. What we accomplished, we accomplished as a team. I want to thank my fellow council members for their tremendous support over the past year, all of you. I really appreciate it. I also want to thank city manager Randy Binder and his great staff for their professionalism and hard work. Special thanks to city attorney Steve Quintanilla, who is in San Diego on business, and his team, as well as Kristy Ramos and Johnny Almy for working so closely in the past with me. They were just by my side every minute and every day, and it greatly was appreciated. I am as humbled and honored now as I was when my term began. I feel very fortunate to be part of such a dedicated, unified council. One year ago, I stated with the community's support and the valued input, we, as your city council, would continue to move forward together in unity, stability, and the leadership on this path of excellence that the city deserves. That remains true today, and I look forward to continuing that spirit during Richard's upcoming term. Thank you very much. I do have one last item of business. My term as mayor marked a significant milestone for us as a city council, as a sitting city council. We are officially a council of mayors, meaning that each of us has the honor of serving as mayor of this fine city. I had a special plaque designed to commemorate the milestone. There is a picture of it, and a sample is being shown up on the screen, and one will now be presented to each of you. We got somebody to do that for us? There it is. Chrissy's doing it. She's doing it. There you go. So, we are all honorary mayors. Good, 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 good. Thank you. Now, we will move on to the action calendar. It is my pleasure to turn item number three over to our city clerk, Kristy Ramos, who will certify the results of the April 10th election. Chrissy?
Thank you. Good afternoon, mayor and council members. As you know, an all-male ballot general municipal election was conducted on April 10th, 2018, for the purpose of electing three officers to serve as Rancho Mirage City Council members for four-year terms. All aspects of the election were conducted in the time, form, and manner as provided by law. The Riverside County Registrar of Voters canvassed the return of election and provided certified results. Out of 9,908 registered voters, 5,557 ballots were cast for a 56.09% voter turnout. Votes for the three full-term seats are as follows. Dana Hobart received 3,849 votes. Iris M. Smotrich received 3,518 votes. Charles Townsend Vincy received 3,515 votes. Kate Spates received 2,102 votes. Robert Mueller received 1,485 votes. And Michael Harrington received 1,052 votes.
Thank you, Chris.
Not done yet.
Okay.
The California Elections Code requires that the city elections officials certify the elections' results to the governing body via adoption of a resolution reciting the facts of the election. A full official statement of the election results is attached to the resolution. Upon adoption of the resolution before you, councilmember Dana Hobart, councilmember Iris M. Smotrich, and councilmember Charles Townsend Vincy will each take your required oath of office and receive a certificate of election. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations to everybody. All right. If there are no questions or comments, I will call for a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
It was close.
Now, may I have the three reappointed council members all meet me in front of the dais, please?
Okay.
So, you can just all three raise your right hand, and I'll do it all at once together, okay? And I will read, I will read it. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I will do.
Thank you very much. And now, I will give you each your certificate of election. Yours.
at this meeting. Thank you very much. Good job. Okay. We took care of that. Now, next is the appointment of the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. Ms. Ramos will also present this staff report. Chrissy?
Yes, sir. So, in accordance with the Rancho Mirage City Charter, each year, the city council shall appoint one council member to serve as mayor and one council member to serve as Mayor Pro Tem. Prior to these appointments being made, councilmembers shall each be identified by the length of time they have continuously served on the city council without having served as mayor. The new mayor shall be the council member with the longest term of consecutive service without having served as mayor. The Mayor Pro Tem shall be the council member who, to the greatest extent possible, appears to be the person most likely to meet the eligibility requirements to succeed the newly-appointed mayor. Based on service records, Richard Kite is due to serve as mayor, and Iris Smotrich is due to serve as Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy. If there are no questions or comments, I will make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
And motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Chris.
May I have our new mayor and Mayor Pro Tem meet me down in front for their oath of office, please?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you will
foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? Congratulations.
Charlie, take care of that chair over there.
I certainly will. You take care of that one, too. And I'm sure you will.
Thank you. Okay. Well, welcome, everybody, today, and we're going to start off today with the public comments. Hopefully, you'll have a lot of positive things about our recent three electors. And I have several yellow slips up here. So the first individual is Carol Leibowitz. Carol, would you like to come forward?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Carol Leibowitz, and I'm very happy to be here to congratulate the reelection of the three incumbents. I also know that everybody congratulates the incumbents and the councilmen. They do a wonderful job in representing the wishes and desires of the Rancho Mirage residents. You are very thoughtful, very fiscally responsible, and got our backs all the time. But you've already congratulated a lot of people here today, your spouses, your partners, former spouses of councilmen before you. But I would also like to congratulate the residents of Rancho Mirage for electing the best people possible in this city of Rancho Mirage. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. The next individual to speak will be Alan Worthy.
Yes, well, congratulations to all three of you into the city. I knew that you would prevail, and very grateful that you did, given the situation in the desert with crime. So there was a meeting at the Palm Springs Convention Center Tuesday night, you may or may not have been aware of. And it's in the realm, if you will, of their forums that they've been scheduling, but this one was quite different. I'm happy to report, new city attorney Ed Kotkin talked about the Brown Act and the Fair Political Practices Act. I don't remember the exact words. The city attorney's not here, you know what I mean? Yeah, and the fact that they don't obey any of it, and those city council meetings over there, you know, turn into a near riot far too often, involving me, as they've attacked me because they don't like what I'm saying. Well, needless to say, that's too bad, and that's my time to speak about all of this crime. So I'm very grateful, again, to all of you for being so supportive. And again, I think that it was a big wake-up call over there Tuesday night. So let's know and pray that that situation is going to change now, they're going to adhere to the rule of law all the way around, and we'll see some more changes over there. And again, calling on Chief Brian Reyes to resign is outrageous. I don't mean to get you off topic, but I know I'm on topic as far as what your best interests are over here, and as the crime, again, had started here. Again, congratulations to all of you. I'm very pleased and very grateful. We didn't need any change here. And you had an interesting write-up, a letter to the editor back on April the first. Rancho Mirage has it right, and in that letter, the man is critical of Palm Springs for all the reasons that I have been. And anyway, enough said. So congratulations, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Alan.
More later. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item that did not turn in a form? Okay. Thank you very much. Mayor Charles Townsend, your contributions to the city of Rancho Mirage as mayor have been so well-received. It truly shows that the residents feel with a reelection to a four-year term on the council. You did a great job as mayor, and your witty personality keeps us all laughing. You truly were a great representative of our city and has done so much during your term. You've quite a journey to get to this point. You are a fixture on our community. You've served as a longtime business owner, chairman of the board of the Chamber of Commerce, along with your partner and former councilmember Gordon, who we love so much. Through all that, you upheld the values of our fine city. Your term as mayor was marked by much success, as you talked about earlier. We are proud that you have been our mayor. Following in your footsteps, and indeed, will be a privilege and an honor. So if you'd like to join me now down at the speaker's podium, we have a gift for you.
Thank you, Richard. Very kind of you.
Taxable.
Is it taxable?
As you can see, Charlie, this is so big. We had to stand it on its end. And on behalf of the city council and the city of Rancho Mirage, I want to thank you for your great year of service, and this is just a small token of our appreciation. And when you see it, there's not another one like it, so I'm sure it'll be very special for you. Well, take off the clothes.
Oh, my.
And stand it up here a little bit.
Oh, yeah. That worked.
So what we have here in the shadow box is really a recreation of the paintings here in the council chamber, along with a plaque and the gavel and a picture of the five mayors. So it's a great piece. Hopefully, you'll find a great spot to put it in, probably in your office on the wall with everything else. Would you like to just say a few words?
Thank you, Richard. Well, believe me, I will definitely treasure this. I will say, I wanted something as good and as big as this, so I did, I will be truthful with you. I didn't want a little tiny nothing, so that you really outdid yourself, and I'm proud. So the word did get out in my little hints of something big, and it's great. And all kidding aside, I really do appreciate it. You know, having an opportunity to have been on this council and being elected twice by the citizens, but I could never do anything like what has happened and what is going to continue to happen the next four years without all of you. And I really mean that. Staff, everybody, has been so supportive. It isn't easy to walk into something like this. People think you can do that. You can't. You couldn't do it. I couldn't do it without all of these people that were there for me and have held my hand and drove the boat, which is me, and let me be myself. As you see, I'm very shy, withdrawing. And they've worked with me and laughed with me, and now that, again, they have said, "Now, now, Charlie." But I appreciate it, Richard, and I know you will do a great job. If Hollywood were going to cast a mayor, you would get the part. So thank you.
Charlie, this isn't paid for yet, so be careful when you walk by Isaiah's office. You want to know where the money's coming to put this all together. So I hope you enjoy it, and you certainly deserve it. You did a great job as mayor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Well, we'll be going on for a couple more minutes here while I give you a little bit of information about Rancho Mirage and what we're doing and what we're going to be doing. And you've all heard the saying, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it," especially during this last year. I can think of no better way to describe the recent election that resulted in all three incumbents being reelected. Even more than our city not being broke, we've experienced substantial growth and progress under the guidance of this council. Through the many years, this council has aimed to focus on improving the quality of life of our residents. Every decision we make is done in the spirit of improving our city and strengthening our community. I'm grateful for the continuity of leadership that the voters of this great city held important. Congratulations to each one of you, council members. And now, I'd like to have the council say a few words, and I'd like to begin with Ted Wild. Ted, on my far right. Ted's been on the council for six years and done a great job. You've got some more work to do, Ted, so...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been an honor being on the council. We've achieved a lot. And I talk about this past election, and of course, I'm very proud of the incumbents being reelected. And I think the true winner is the city. The city has been able to maintain the leadership, and our job is now to preserve the excellence. And Charlie, part of that excellence was preserved during your term as mayor. You did a great job. We're proud of you. It's a pleasure to work with you. We go back to 2014 when we campaigned together. We held each other's hand there. We had a lot of conversations, a lot of private moments, and yet, we're pleased that we now sit here with a great deal of pride for a city that has excelled. And so, again, Charlie, congratulations, and we wish you the best, and so glad that we will continue to work together.
Thank you, Ted. That's very nice. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ted. And now, mayor pro temp, Iris Smotrich. Iris has been on the council for seven years. Iris?
Yes, in a fast seven years it has been, and a wonderful seven years. I couldn't have asked for anything more pleasurable or more rewarding. And there's very little I can say about Charlie that hasn't already been said a hundred times. And when he talked about how busy he was, I have never known a year when there were so many things taking place, and Charlie was always there to lend a hand and to help remedy whatever situations needed helping. You did have ups and downs, we all have had through the years and through our lifetime, but you've handled things so beautifully and so graciously. You're certainly a role model for us all. You've always been yourself. You've always been a team player, and we've always felt the comfort that you have exuded to all of us. You always brought humor, but you always brought professionalism, and we appreciated the humor that you displayed here, and you made every day more fun than the day before. I will miss, and I have missed, sitting next to you, but I have been practicing waving at you. And even though I don't wear a crown, I'm trying to remedy the fact that I can wave to you appropriately and graciously. Thank you again for all your service.
Thank you, Iris, and to us, you are our fabulous queen. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. And to my left now is Dana. Dana's been on the council for sixteen years. Looking for four more. Dana?
Well, Charlie, I wanted to touch back a little bit of history. I can say all the things that our colleagues are saying about you. I loved Charlie from start to finish, and we've been close friends for a great number of years, and I've been very proud of you this year. The nostalgic point that I wanted to bring up, and historical point, was back in 2003, I had become mayor. I was first elected in 2002, I was mayor pro temp, and then I was mayor the next year. And early on into the mayoral position, I approached Ron Mepos, my friend, my colleague, and a close buddy, who was himself a political wonk, just a wonderful guy. And I pulled him into my office, and I said, "You know, Ron, the reason our council's not getting much done without fights, arguments, contentions, is because of one thing and one thing only. Everybody wants to be mayor, but in those days, we elected the mayor. And when Ron and I got elected, Harvey Gerber was already on the council, and we were sort of in alliance. And Richard Kite and Alan Seaman was the remaining members of the council, but they only had two votes between them, and we had three, and so we elected the mayor, we elected the mayor pro temp. And I told Ron, I said that, you know, I've been doing this now maybe three, four, five, six months, and being mayor has got its good points, but it also means you have to go to a lot more meetings, eat a lot more rubber chicken, and do a lot more things that consume a lot of your time. Seems to me that maybe by rotating the mayor, we would be able to have everybody on an equal footing, and the animosities that existed in the prior campaign, and they were there, that Ron and I both overcame, but they were there. So that the bottom line would be that if everybody knew he or she was going to become mayor, then my feeling is we would find a lot less resistance to good ideas, and we would have supported their good ideas instead of worrying about who's going to look good for the next election. And Ron was immediately in accord with that perspective. And what it meant was, the three of us could have, as we saw it at that point in time, could have remained in control of who was mayor, mayor pro temp, for an indefinite period of time. So we put it on the, we put it on the council agenda, and we discussed it, and we voted to eliminate mayor by election, and rather, have mayor by rotation based upon the longest measure of time without that position. And thinking back over all of that made me think a lot of Ron. Also, I should say that at that time, quickly in support were both Richard and Alan, and everybody, when we put that on the ballot, on the council agenda, and we voted it in, it had just a wonderful effect on the camaraderie of this city council. We didn't, still didn't always agree on everything, but what we did was, we didn't oppose each other because we didn't want to see the other guy look good. And it, in my view, made our city exceptional. Other cities have followed it, followed that since. And I just wanted to say that you are a product of those early decisions that were made back in 2003 by the then-city council. You've been a wonderful mayor, a wonderful friend, and I'm glad to give you that little bit of ancient history so that all of us can appreciate what it means to be mayor and rotating it tells us all something about the council. We support each other, not on every issue perhaps, but we support each other as being human beings doing the right thing in the city of Rancho Mirage for people who deserve the right thing from their city government. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ancient history, Dana, goes back a ways, yes. And next to Dana is the former mayor, currently council member of Rancho Mirage.
Yes.
Charlie, would you like to say anything? You have anything left.
I will. I have been speaking and up and down here, I'm getting tired of up and down. I've had more exercise today than I had all week. However...
By the way, Charlie's been on the council for four years.
Yes, I have, and looking forward to the next four years. Dana, in hearing your story, so what you're really saying to me, that you hadn't changed that, I wouldn't be mayor, because the three of you would definitely have been against me.
We were thinking of a coup as it was.
Thank you, everybody, and as I have said enough, it was something that was the highest point of my life to be here, and again, with all of you, it's family. I had the good fortune of being here with Gordon for the years that he was on the council, so it was easy for me to step into familiar surroundings and people who loved him and me, and we loved all of you. So it was a nice, easy transition to be under your tutelage of all of you, and I still am going to be under your tutelage. And as Jimmy Durante said, great comedian, you know, always know one to say enough is enough, so goodnight, Mrs. Calabash, wherever you are.
That's all, folks.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, you've heard from the four existing councilmen in a number of years, they've served us all. This is my fifth term as mayor and 19th year on the city council, and a few things have certainly happened over the last 20 years. Back in 2001, when I was mayor for the first time, population of Rancho Mirage was around 14,000. As we look into this year, the population now is well over 18,000. With the help of my fellow council members and city staff, I've experienced a multitude of wonderful milestones during each of my terms, and I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to tell you about some of the significant events that have occurred while I was mayor. During my first term, we welcomed the valley's premier entertainment and dining destination with the completion of the river. The river is an important property for Rancho Mirage, and it's in the heart of what we consider our downtown. During the second term in 2006, the development of Monterey Marketplace 2 began, resulting in addition of several retail stores and restaurants to the existing power center. Plans to renovate and convert the former lodge resort to the Ritz-Carlton was approved during that term, and in some time, it took time to finish, but it was well worthwhile when we look at the current project. Agreements between the city and the Aguacaliente Band of Quoia Indians was entered into, resulting in the annexation of the 40-acre resort casino property in the city. Dana had a major role in this conversion. This was a historic event that brought the city and the tribe together and marked a deepening of our mutually beneficial relationship between both parties. During the course of the third term of 2010, construction began on the Sunnylands Center and Gardens. The Center and Gardens is an important addition to the Annenberg property, providing an opportunity for meetings to address issues of national and global importance, while teaching about the history of Sunnylands to the public. During my fourth term in 2019, I had the honor of greeting President Obama upon his arrival and stay in Rancho Mirage. This year also marked the celebration of the city's 40th anniversary. Much has happened in those 40 years and since. As we now turn our attention to the coming year, we anticipate that it could be one of Rancho Mirage's most exciting years ever. As Charlie mentioned earlier, construction on the Del Webb project is progressing rapidly. With over 1,000 homes planned, the project will undoubtedly benefit the surrounding area. The Westin will enjoy an increase in guests in the hotel, dining, and stays, while commercial businesses nearby will benefit from the customers. Potentially, one of the most significant projects in Rancho Mirage, and indeed, the valley, is Section 31. The concept of the master plan, this property includes resort hotels, commercial property, residential, and recreation uses, with a focus on the healthy outdoors. We look forward to working with the new owners over the next year. Our brand enhancement effort will begin the process of enhancing our identity and the sense of place. We recognize the importance of an effort in helping to define our community for residents and visitors alike. We will provide additional means of communicating with residents through the launching of our city app, and by providing weekly updates of events and activities throughout the city. I look forward to interacting with our businesses as a regular basis through the variety of meetings. We hope to stay in tune with what's going on with our city's businesses and what they need. We will explore additional opportunities to utilize our community assets, such as Rancho Mirage Amphitheater and the Observatory. And also, we will review our conductivity of bike lanes through the city to identify potential improvements to our goal of promoting health and wellness. Finally, we will continue to work with our valley partners in efforts to address issues such as homelessness and traffic synchronization. Most important of all, we will continue to make decisions that are in the best interest of all our residents and the future of Rancho Mirage. So thank you for attending today's celebration. I look forward to serving you all as mayor for the coming year. You'll notice on the screen and behind us, there's a collage of various councils that I've had the honor of serving during my terms of mayor. My fellow councilmen's are more than just councilmen, they're also colleagues, and they're part of our family. So when you ask yourself, "Why does Rancho Mirage never lose?", there are several reasons, but most importantly, it's because we are family. And with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting, and thanks again for coming.